All right, next we'll move into board business. First up, we have the resolution approved in minutes of October 13th for meeting. Any questions, corrections?
I don't hear any.
Resolutions, or any motions, second to the board meetings by October 13th.
I'll make that motion.
I'll say.
Trustee Ramsey?
Aye.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Byer?
Aye.
Mayor Cahill?
Aye.
All right, next is a resolution to approve the payments and warrants. Anybody have any questions on the bills that they haven't already asked?
No, no, you've answered about one question.
All right, I'll entertain a motion in a second to pay the bills.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Byer?
Aye.
Trustee Ramsey?
Aye.
Mayor Cahill?
Aye.
Motion passed, please.
Next, we have a resolution to create a retirement contribution reserve fund. Do you want to give a brief explanation of why we're doing this, Christina?
Certainly. New York State's been borrowing from the retirement fund and deferring a portion of their payments, the repayment of the loan, back to the fund. Additionally, the downward spiral of the markets have caused an $11 billion deficit in the value of the funds in recent years. Thus, they caused the underfunding of the New York State Retirement Pension Fund. This is a countrywide issue, not just a New York State issue. Believe it or not, the New York State Retirement Fund is one of the better-funded pension funds at a 90% funding level compared to Illinois, who's only funded at 24%. So, the prelude to future actions by New York State Retirement regarding pension contributions is made, has been made by, to be made by municipalities is Gatsby 68. From the Government, Governmental Accounting Standards Board, statement number 68, Accounting and Financial Reporting for Pensions, that is a new report that was just recently issued and that has been instituted. It will revise and establish new financial reporting requirements for most state and local governments that provide their employees with pension benefits. This statement requires municipalities now that provide pensions to recognize their long-term obligations for pension benefits as a liability for the very first time and to more comprehensively and comparably measure the annual costs of such benefits. So, in summary, Gatsby is requiring the recognition of long-term liabilities, albeit only as an additional disclosure in our A U D. The next logical step then will eventually be to physically fund this underfunded balance. Therefore, the recommendation of our auditors is to create this reserve for the underfunded pension account. The question isn't, will this charge be wanted to the village? The question is, when will this bill arrive? If we act proactively, we will have funds available to pay the higher invoices New York State Retirement will most certainly be coming soon.
So, they plan, was it a 7% return on their investment?
Yeah.
Which is, you know, really not, is not realistic whatsoever.
No.
So, when you see these numbers that New York State is projecting, they're completely unrealistic and Christine is absolutely correct and Laurel Landers will expand more on this.
Yeah.
I've asked her to expand and she'd be very complimentary about it when she explains. It's pretty complicated.
Yes.
It really is.
It took me a while to kind of read through the, all the data that you can find on the Internet about it, but it comes down to the fact that there's a lot of money that's not there that needs to be, and a lot of people are using, the tier three and four are the people that are using the monies now that are draining the fund and consequently, it's underfunded. So, it's, the money's going to have to come from somewhere.
This has happened before in the past. We've had to, remember, we had to pay into the fund, every municipality had to pay into the fund for a deficit that they had for the same reason.
The deficit, this hasn't been due significantly higher.
This is big. I think we wanted them to come pick up the check, as I recall.
Oh, it is.
Yeah, I recall reading the minutes. I recall reading the minutes about that. Yeah, I do.
That was Jack.
Yes, yes. Did you recall that?
No, I think it's a very, very good idea from a financial planning standpoint, so I concur with yourself and Laurel Landers and I believe the board does too. Does anybody want to draw straws for reading the resolution or would you like me to just go through it?
Oh, we'd just love to hear your voice.
I'm not calling you 11 o'clock at night to tell you about next story. All right, resolution of the Village Board of Webster Trustees to establish a retirement contribution fund. At a regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of Village Webster, Monroe County, New York, held at the community meeting hall, 29th South Avenue in the Village Webster on the 27th day of October 2016. The following resolution was offered by Mayor Cahill, whereas the Village Webster Board of Trustees desired to establish a reserve fund to be used for the purpose of financing retirement contributions. Now therefore, we have resolved pursuant to section 6R of the General Municipal Law as amended, there is hereby established a reserve fund to be known as the Retirement Contribution Reserve Fund herein after a reserve fund. The purpose of this reserve fund is to finance retirement contributions to the New York State Local Employees Retirement System for the villages' general and sewer fund. The Chief Fiscal Officer of the Village Webster is hereby directed to deposit and secure the monies of this reserve fund in a manner provided by section 10 of the General Municipal Law. The Chief Fiscal Officer may invest the monies in the reserve fund in a manner provided by section 11 of the General Municipal Law, consistent with the investment, or investment policy of the Village Webster. Any interest earned or capital gains realized on the monies so deposited or invested shall prove to be made part of the reserve fund. The Chief Fiscal Officer shall account for the reserve fund in a manner which maintains the separate identity of the reserve fund and shows the date and the amount of each sum paid into the fund. Interest earned by the fund, capital gains or losses resulting from the sale of investments of the fund, the amount and date of each withdrawal from the fund, and the total assets of the fund, showing the cash balance and schedule of investments, and shall, within 60 days of the end of each fiscal year, furnish a detailed report of the operation and condition of this fund to the mayor and Board of Trustees. Except as otherwise provided by law, expenditures from this reserve fund shall be made only for the purpose for which the reserve fund is established. No expenditures shall be made from the reserve fund without the prior approval and resolution of the Board of Trustees and such additional actions or proceedings as may be required by section 6R of the General Municipal Law or any other law. So, I will entertain a motion in a second to establish a retirement contribution reserve fund. That is, aye?
I'll make that motion. Second, aye.
Trustee Byer?
Aye.
Trustee Ramsey?
Aye.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Mayor Cahill?
Aye.
Motion passed, please.
Before we go on, Chris, would you read that first sentence and have me read it prior?
Yeah.
You're welcome.
New York State has been borrowing from the retirement fund and deferring a portion of the required repayment of those loans back to the fund.
That's the problem.
Yes.
New York State has been borrowing.
I don't want social security, though.
Yep.
What happened to that lock box? All right, next we have is authorization for Mayor Cahill to sign the agreement with Maglin Land Surveying for a survey map for the microcell tower at 103 Webster Road. The cost not to exceed $1,200. This is again part of the process for the direction of the cell tower.
I'll second it.
Trustee?
Aye.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Byer?
Aye.
Trustee Ramsey?
Aye.
Mayor Cahill?
Aye.
So, Jerry made the motion to the Madam Executive Session, June 2nd.
Yeah.
Eight forty one. Eight forty eight, Mike.
I'm taking it there.
So, that's nine. Eight, eight forty, we'll do this here. All right, next we have a resolution to approve a correction to the village's 4B minutes from July 12, 2016 in regards to budget transfers and modifications. And it's to read the fiscal year end 216. It currently reads fiscal year 215. We cannot legally go in, it's my understanding from the email Josette sent as she received the information from Nikon. We can't legally go in and change the minutes, but we can attach this resolution, Josette, to those minutes of July 12th, should we, as a board, agree to do so. So, I appreciate the fact that you did the research with Nikon, brought that to our attention as far as the proper process goes. Christina, thanks you for the catch. So, it was a good team effort there and I'll entertain a motion in a second from the board to change the, to put this notation in the minutes, the minutes from the July 12, 2016 board minutes.
I'll second it.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Ramsey?
Aye.
Trustee Byer?
Aye.
Mayor Cahill?
Aye.
Motion passed, please.
All right, next we have the authorization for, Will Barham, do we have a little Barham here? For Will Barham and Megan Blessing to attend the class for November 2016 Microsoft cell. The cost not to exceed $128 each. Emails that go back and forth, does everybody have an opportunity to read emails as to why we're doing this?
Yep.
Okay. This is a much more comprehensive course than the company offered, we talked about, so, online. But they go into a lot more detail than I do.
No, no, Will needs to basically just say it then.
Well, then we're saying it to.
I love you.
We're your friends.
It's not, he has a day away from me.
Well, that means he has a day away from Kathy.
No, she gets a day away from me.
Well, yeah, that's very good. All right, so I'll entertain a motion in a second to authorize Will and I.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Byer?
Aye.
Trustee Ramsey?
Aye.
Mayor Cahill?
Aye.
Motion passed, please.
All right. Next, we have a resolution to approve LMT computer backup and/or network card. We did have a discussion about that and Joey warned you I was going to turn this over to you because you're the, you're our LMT computer person and for competency in describing to the board, I understand why we're doing it, but if you don't mind, I'd appreciate it if you would like your, your approach to it.
Well, a part of the issue we talked about prior had to do with the fact that our current backup, external backup drives are not sufficient. So consequently, we've spoken with LMT about a backup system and what their recommendations would be for the village. So, the first quote, I think that you're looking at, included storage at LMT's cloud or in LMT's cloud. The expense for that primarily is a monthly fee of $500, just for storing data with them. So, that can add up pretty quickly. My suggestion would actually be the second quote that they gave us. It includes a Synology disk station, network attached storage. And basically with this system, once we purchase that attached storage hardware, it's ours. I mean, that we have that indefinitely. With this scenario, however, we will go back to using a rotation of two external hard It's a much higher upfront cost for that one. However, we don't have the recurring $500 monthly payment to use their cloud for storing. The couple of things on that quote, just to clarify a little bit, if you notice, the setup one-time fee in fine print below that estimates five to eight hours, but not to exceed eight hours total for their labor. So, on the quote already, they quoted it to include eight hours of labor, however, it could be less than that, if they can get it done quicker. The quote itself also includes the two external hard drives, two 39-piece. One suggestion that came up the other day was for us actually to purchase a third external hard drive that we could copy all of the oldest data that the village has currently on server, as much as we can fit onto one of those external drives. And that with the older data is something that could stay at the bank in the safe deposit box for retrieval if we needed the data that was the oldest currently. And then the other two would be a rotating situation of downloading our backups onto an external drive once a week, every other week. My thought is the best case scenario would be to rotate them weekly. So, we're backing up the system every single week and then swapping them out at the bank. So, it is a much higher startup cost, but after that, all we would have as far as the annual scenario would include the annual licensing agreement.
Well, still off almost half of the monthly fee and that doesn't even include the initial setup. And I believe you said that, you know, you could, we could put almost the years backup on one, on one of those external hard drives every year. We talked about at the end of the fiscal year, we back up everything onto that one external hard drive and we could have, you know, that's 2000, fiscal year 2015, 16, 16, 17. So, we've got everything on one disk.
Yeah.
And I, I just think that's the best way to go. Obviously involves driving back and forth to the bank, but you're talking, you know.
Well, and, yeah, and one of us goes to the bank with a deposit daily.
Right.
So, that's not really a major part.
We have that.
It's a hundred dollars a month.
That's Canada National Bank, right?
Yeah, the safe deposit box.
I mean, April said, you know, it's crazy not to do it.
So, on top of that, $3,349.50, my thought is to add a third external hard drive to that fee so that we have the third one here and again, could take the oldest data, put it on that one and it stays at the bank in the safe deposit box until we need to retrieve older data.
And that's on the next page, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
And will be including, we'd have to add in $748 additional dollars or no?
That's something different.
Something different, okay.
No. Oh, I know what you're looking at, the network card. I'm looking at the one that's got the picture.
Yeah, I'm with you. I know there was an, I know there was.
No, you have to add another block.
Seven forty-eight.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would address that separately from the backup storage scenario. I think that's most important and then we can take a look, I mean, if you want to take a look at the third one now, we can, or make a decision on the storage.
Well, I believe recommendation, getting the storage done immediately, you know, you guys can take a closer look, longer look at the management card issue.
Yeah, I mean, I can talk about it tonight, I just didn't know if you wanted to finalize the backup situation first. No? Okay.
All right, let's, go ahead.
Sure.
That's sure.
The third one?
Yeah, please.
There's not really a whole lot to explain as far as the quote. Right now, with the service that we have, there is a backup battery should the power go out. However, typically that battery is only going to last an hour or two. And at that point, as things stand now, the servers will just shut down and we could lose data, could damage the servers, could be any one of those scenarios.
There's just not a control shutdowns ever?
Exactly. So, what this network management card does is when there's a power outage, power out, it allows the servers to shut down properly. So, you're not damaging them, you're not losing data. It protects the servers basically in a power outage outing. We've had power outages in my time here, so I think it's important that we outweigh that either. And again, this is a one-time expense. Once the card is installed, it's paid for. So, you're not going to see this as an annual expense by any means.
Let me ask you this question, I'm always a miss for asking down the material, I honestly didn't think about it. We put in one or two new servers. Do we have to get charged again or have to come back and configure this or no?
Well, anytime you add another server, you're going to have to reconfigure it for any number of things. It won't just be for the card and the backup, you have to reconfigure it to work with your network.
Well, if you take one out, put one in, so that's.
You still got to reconfigure the new one, though.
I know.
So.
It's just negotiator.
We also set one aside for the new generator, who, well, will help with that scenario.
Oh, yes.
Oh, yeah. So, that's a good one. Where is that generator, by the way?
Somewhere safe and sound in a factory.
In the waterway. Probably in the same storage area that our air conditioner is.
That's not so. All right, so, so in essence, my suggestion would be to go ahead with the network management card and the quote for storage that includes the network attached storage. But again, with that quote, I would add a third external drive.
So, that's, we're going to add these together.
About $4,500.
I, I absolutely agree because all it takes is one power outage and, you know, that transfer station down there, how many times has that gone out? Many years, many times. So, I, I wouldn't agree with your suggestion, your recommendation, both of you.
Is the, is the cost on here, Joe, the $39 for that six terabyte extra hardware, that effect, do you know? That's their cost, I'm sure they're making something out of it.
Well, not really. I mean, their, their, their main focus is customer service. They purposely do not mark up hardware like that. And that's kind of, that's a rule of thumb for the company as a whole. They're, they're promoting their customer service and being a connection to ask questions about, to solve computer issues. That's their main focus. It's not on making money on hardware.
Just, just a question, if we're looking at purchasing a third, would that be, could that be nice, but if you, if you're saying here, you look.
We actually looked at state.com and we found a bigger hard drive with eight terabyte. It was cheaper, but John said right off the bat, that's not a good one. They have a track record of failing early. So, we don't have the knowledge that he does and we're not going to waste his time trying to find a cheaper one for us because it's only going to be maybe 10 or 15 bucks one way or another.
It's $239, exactly.
Yeah, yeah.
That's bad.
Yeah, oh, yeah, we did that, we went down that route too when we saw this from the get go.
So, I have a number for the combination of the two of $4,097.50, is that what you have?
Forty-eight, yeah.
What calculator are you using?
The one Jerry handed me. The one he used to take tests.
Did you, did you add in the seven forty-eight? Yeah. Are you going to add in the third external hard drive?
Yeah, the seven forty-eight.
No, no. That's, seven forty-eight is the management card.
Forty-three thirty-six?
Forty-three thirty-six is what we're looking at, yes.
That's your fee?
Somebody will have their calculator.
No, because they made this.
Don't use Jerry's calculator, that's a little. All right, so I'll entertain a motion in a second for the LMT backup computer and the network card, the price and the cost not to exceed $4,336.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Trustee Ramsey?
Aye.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Byer?
Aye.
Mayor Cahill?
Aye.
Motion passed, please.
While we're talking about that, there isn't, there are care volumes. There are funds to cover that for any, any line, so I thought it would, would be appropriate to offer the budget modification now to approve the expense already. And I'm recommending that we do a budget modification of $5,000 since currently computer assistance line is under anyways because we've had several issues of late. So, I'm recommending $5,000 transfer from planters because planters were paid for by the bid, so we have that line. And the expense that we'll be incurring will be divided into three categories, office supplies, maintenance agreements, and computer assistance. And then, under the sewer fund, their cost will be 10% of what we incur. Oops, and that last line is not filled in, sorry to apologize for that. But the total will be $500, coming from gas because we're under budget on that line for now. And then again, also divided into the three categories, office supplies, maintenance, agreements, and computer assistance. I will fill in that final line. I will fill in that final line there. I apologize for that and I'll give that to Josette to include in her minutes.
This would be two forty-six, right?
Yeah. All right. Very good.
I'll entertain the motion in a second to entertain these budget modifications as presented by our treasurer, Mr. Sandoz. And it allows for purchase of a network management card, backup hardware for, from LMT. It allows for LMT also to configure the same.
I'll make that motion.
One second.
Trustee Abolito?
Aye.
Trustee Lansing?
Aye.
Trustee Byer?
Aye.
Mayor Cahill?
Aye.
Motion passed.
All right, next we have authorization for Mayor Cahill to sign the agreement with Monroe County Department for the date extension of the antenna transition period, which will enable the cell carriers to relocate office south of our tanks before June ninth, two thousand seventeen. Yep. According to what Don says. Pardon me? Just wondering if that's a. Well, that's why, that's why we're moving, they allowed us to go to June. The date was in order. Yeah, I think you ran that by God. Yeah, we did. Have it by June nine. Yeah, very comfortable that date. I have a motion in a second.
I'll make that motion.
One second. Trustee Byer?
Aye.
Trustee Lansing?
Aye.
Trustee workshop?
Aye.
Mayor Cahill?
Aye.
Motion passed.
All right, next we have authorization for Mayor Cahill and Jake Swimley to sign the agreement for the healthcare memorandum between the village and the, the union, CSE.
That just resolves the grievance, right?
Yes.
I think Jerry, it's your turn to read. You want to, want to redo this, please?
We're just authorized to sign it. This isn't like a resume. This is a, you don't have to read it, Mr. Cahill.
Well, that's the way people know we're.
You're a little bit on the band. Think you did it, because you're just. It's like, it's basically like any other contract. You didn't read verbatim the Monroe County Department for anything. True, true.
Jerry wouldn't let me, that's why. All right, I'll entertain a motion in a second.
If you want to hit the highlights of what it is, but.
Well, the grievance was filed because of the, the changes in the, in the health insurance benefits and through negotiations, um, this is what we came up with to resolve the, the grievance. So, I mean, we can then have.
The important part is that the village had, really had no choice to switch health plans, but the former plan was no longer offered by Exelis, so you had I think it was one that you thought was the most comparable to the other one. It was a little deficient according to the union and a couple of aspects, so, so it was a language in the current union contract that, that they had to, uh, what's that exact language? We're getting rid of that language though. They had to, if their benefits were diminished, their benefits cannot be diminished in any respect without their express written consent. So since their express written consent wasn't had, they had to do with changes in deductibles and stuff.
Right, and they have.
They filed, they filed a grievance, so to, to resolve the grievance, the, the union members get an additional three hundred and fifty dollars in, for their HSAs for a single two-person paying plan, seven hundred dollars for a paying plan through May thirty-one, twenty nineteen. But the language is going to be changed in the, the upcoming contract that, um, changes to specific health or dental insurance plans will be mutually agreed upon by the village and the union. So that way they can't complain. They will be equally at fault if their benefits end up being diminished.
Very good.
Thanks for reading that, Tom.
That was, that was my Jake Swimley summary.
All right, I'll entertain a motion in a second authorizing the mayor to sign the.
Just one more thing, since Don was reading that and saying that you're going to change that in a new contract, as far as the CSEA looking at the plans and you guys looking at the plans too, don't forget you have about two weeks to take a look at those plans, by the way.
Right.
Because they soon need to be, they need to have a decision by the end of November. Open enrollment is done December seventh, so just a friendly reminder.
Thank you. And that should be on the agenda for the workshop next week, next week. And I know Jake has emailed this, this file on that also. All right, I'll entertain a motion in a second to, uh, call the mayor to sign the memorandum of agreement.
One second.
Trustee Abolito?
Aye.
Trustee Byer?
Aye.
Trustee Lansing?
Aye.
Mayor Cahill?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Now? Um, I have nothing. Anybody have any questions on the financial statements? I don't remember seeing a building report in this package. That's right here, sir, it's in my package. Sorry if you didn't come prepared.
Yeah.
Can I share, please? All right, Will.
I have a building report. I have a building report. I don't know.
Uh, maybe it fell out of my, my package. Come up in the other room, maybe.
Or on the counter.
Or possibly on a counter, that could happen. Will, I, we'll turn the meeting over to you, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening. I would like you to pronounce the owner of seven nine south avenue.
Uh, that would be, uh, Boa Long Roger Boomey. Ooh, that was good. I've talked to him several times. We call him Boob.
You just call him Boob.
Me and you? So basically, I've been very busy administratively this, this month, so you don't see a lot of complaints and violations. I, I did handle complaints and violations, but a lot of them did come to fruition because they weren't legit, so to speak. You know, you answer the call, you go investigate and say, no, it's not really a violation, but would you please at least do something nice for your neighbor? Uh, so we had a lot of mediation without being a mediator. So, uh, probably the two things on here that might be worth noting is the pool at forty-one Metal Drive was removed. Remember last month, we talked about possibly taking steps last removing it and then I got a phone call from Wells Fargo and they said it's been removed. I'm like, oh, well, that's nice. The pool was gone.
And they did it without a backup, man.
They did it without a backup. We didn't have enough to the practice. We let it take the pool to the road.
By the way, two guys, an hour and a half. That's, I won't break that up though.
Uh, and believe it or not, there's a fence on Donovan Street.
Oh, gosh.
That's around the junkyard, uh, so the fence is up.
Yes.
Uh, so we canceled our court date, which was Friday, I think it was. So that's all set.
Thank you very much for your diligence.
Oh, yeah, that was a, that was a fun one. Positive side is I got, I'm reviewing the plans for the North Avenue apartments, so they're started there, underway, they cleared the site. Ran into a couple of snags that they're working on, but other than that, uh, finished the plans for the garage because they're running an area to store things and finished the foundation permit for the apartment building. And I just finished the first six-unit building for the brownstone building because they're calling me and, because I, I asked, I've been giving a schedule of what they want me to to, uh, review first because it takes a while. Uh, the, the townhouses don't take that long, but the apartments, they'll take a little while. Um, we had a grand opening at Noco. Some of you were there. Uh, have you been inside?
Yeah.
It's really nice. We were there, yeah, we were.
Completely different.
In the rain, we had fun.
The thing that impressed me the most really was I, I had complaints from people saying, oh, you know, I didn't get notification, it's going to affect my property assessment and the lights from the canopy. It's probably one of the best light setup I've ever seen on a canopy. It just stays right underneath the, on the pumps and doesn't spread out or anything.
I like the location of the, of the sign also. It's not up in the air and all lit up. It's, you know, off to the side, it looks nice.
Well, they almost put it in the wrong spot. When I was walking around and talking to my day, um, it was, in the plans and what was approved, it shows the sign behind the stop car. Okay, the stop car of the road, we stopped the car there. Well, they had it above beyond that and I said, uh, before you guys get too much further here, I said, you might want to review this, talk to the superintendent there and then, yeah, sure enough, I was wrong, so we moved it back. Thankfully, they didn't install the whole sign before they got too far and it wasn't too bad, so we caught it early, thankfully. Let's see.
Well, and, and, and in talking to their construction manager, and this goes to both you and Jake and the rest of the guys in the DPW, um, they were amazingly impressed at the cooperation they received from your departments. Um, and, and, and the construction manager made it a point to bring that to my attention and to say that, you know, for, for this village, the cooperation that they received from this village, from yourself and Jake and the guys, there are nine to ten other locations that they have to go through this process with that doesn't come remotely close to the cooperation that they received from, from your office and from Jake, so. And then, and, and this is not the first person I've heard this from. I've heard from Bill Ford and a number of people, business owners in the village um, that commend how much easier it is to work with the, with your departments. So that's, that's, you know, it's a good feather, a big feather in your cap for that and I appreciate it.
I appreciate that. And please understand that it doesn't mean that when they say that, that we don't skip on the rules or anything like that, but the philosophy that I received from someone a long time ago, uh, from another municipality is to treat the, um, applicants coming in like, um, clients or, you know, they're, they're paying for something. And so my philosophy is if you can't do it this way, let's work on what you can do rather than just stopping there. So that's, I think that's what they might mean.
Well, it is because there's, there's a lot of municipalities that, you know, and I could think of three of them from right off my tongue in a minute, who sometimes will go that extra effort to put those blocks up and it's, it's comforting to know that you guys don't do that and the relationship is echoed by numerous people.
But, you know, in, in the, in the same sense, for Noco to reinvest in the village, I mean, they could have done like a, a lot of these facilities where they removed the tanks and then just let it die and then you've got an eye for a long time.
And, and quite frankly, eight months ago, we had a meeting and they were out. They were leaving.
Yes.
Because of market issues, even though that store does a significant amount of business, um, their general focus and their market is in Buffalo.
Yeah.
So six months ago, eight months ago, we had a meeting and because we needed to talk about the parking area back there and they were going to leave. And for them to turn around and invest two million dollars into this station and in the village and reconfigure it and do so in two months was, was, uh, a welcome, a welcome sight. So we're very fortunate, um, that the Noco, you know, decided to invest two million. You know, we've got another gentleman who's going to be investing a significant amount of money with the Millard Bakery. Um, I have a meeting with him on Monday and Will, I'd like you to attend, Darryl, if anybody wants to attend. I did speak with the, the owner of the, the waffle factory. I met with him on, I just happened to catch. He said he was going to open on Sunday and he wasn't open. He's open now?
Yeah.
Yeah. See, I saw him on Saturday and my son and I stopped in and we're all excited and, um, so his name's Nick and, you know, gave some fresh squeezed orange juice and he said he was going to open on Sunday, so the center of church was open, we drove down there, nothing.
I think he opened up like eight o'clock or nine. It was funny, yeah, so I don't know what happened.
Picture on Facebook. A waffle. Nice. Well, I encourage everybody to give them, give the waffle factory a visit. I know, and my wife's very excited about, uh, you know, her stopping down when she gets back.
And, uh, just a couple of things, uh, two houses that got fired, the one at fifty-six Mohawk Street, that's been demolished. I have a set of plans in my office, so as soon as I get a contractor, he'll be issuing the permit for that, we'll be starting from there. And then sixty-five Sherwood Avenue that should be up for auction, if it has been up for auction pretty soon with accounting and I've already received phone calls from potential investors asking questions about the property and building, what can be done. That's about it.
Could I, could I bend your ear just for one second? One hundred to one oh four, um, East Main.
Yeah.
Where are we in that process?
Well, um, we gave the owner the then owner sixty days, so we're still on that sixty days.
Okay.
However, since then, it's gone into foreclosure.
Right.
And so I called the attorney that was part of the foreclosure.
Okay.
Because Monroe County has called the attorney. Called them, they called me back and I got their email address and I sent them a complimentary copy of our order.
Okay.
So that they could pass that on to the, the bank.
Do you know who the bank is?
Uh, it is USA, US Bank, but I, it was Chase Bank. And I don't know if Chase Bank and US Bank are the same entity, no?
No.
Okay. Well, US Bank is what's listed on the foreclosure case.
Okay.
So, but I might be hearing from the.
Well, that, that's a positive step, I would say, for us because the bank's foreclosing on the property, we may have options
Yeah.
um, regarding demolition. Hopefully they'll hire a service company and send them in there to do a comprehensive bid on either repairing or demolishing. Typically they'll have, do the servicing company do a, a repair and a demolition bid, um, on, on, on property, so.
But, you know, I guess it, what, what was the style of house, Judy, that thing historically?
I don't remember.
It's like the only one in the area?
Yeah.
And it would be shame, if you change the mileage, it could end up, you know, and they front back open to, to look like the, you know, the else.
Well, what's really sad is it's been about deteriorating, deteriorating to the condition that it is now because once you've got water infiltration over years and years and years, there's pretty much nothing you're going to be able to do. And then you get water between the foundation and the ground and you have a heart freeze like you've had in the past summer with the two bridges winters and the walls, they just buckle and then your, your, your options are minimal. And the bank's not going to want to dump, you know, forty to eighty thousand dollars in repairs and it could be significant, it could be more than that.
Unless they, they auction it off and they get an investor who's willing to do that.
Yeah.
Well, that's it. I don't know about like the gas station next door and stuff.
Well, I, I don't know if he'd want the building or if he'd want the parking. I don't know.
I, I don't know. See, that's, I know I talked to him.
Well, thank you very much, Will. I appreciate it. You had, did you have anything else?
Nope, I'm good, thanks.
Well, I appreciate you putting all the time in for, uh, North Avenue project phase four also.
Thank you.
Do you have enough hours?
Yeah, actually surprisingly, yeah. And I haven't had to go too much over, so it's not been that.
Do you know if our new trucks, the one that's getting stripped, the three fifty that came in?
It sells already.
Oh, it doesn't? You need a stepway to get in.
Yeah, I asked.
First I did one of these.
Well, yeah, I was gonna, I asked if they got a booster seat for Fritz or.
Oh, did you?
Oh, you definitely need to get some step runners on that thing.
Well, they're talking about it, yeah.
Yeah, they have to. Anything else? It's all right. You want to talk about trick or treat, Duke?
I don't.
Okay. Can we, can we imagine?
No, I'll definitely be there.
Okay, I will.
I will be there, Jerry.
Yeah, Joe's in, Joe's in charge.
Um, we are still very short on prizes. We've had a number of gift cards brought off. Other, no other prizes besides gift cards and even at, even at that. And even at, even at that, we're, so, um, Megan has requested three different quotes. And unfortunately, I don't have the exact numbers with me. However, the Bistro offered to do the same thing at the same price.
Now, yeah, and I'm, I'm, and I'll figure better than he is.
So we'll be looking for volunteers for that day as well.
What, what day is that?
Well, I think, yeah.
Okay.